I can't ask David.
We can share.
They've heard enough of me.
Sharing is caring.
Okay, so we're good.
I can read this.
Yeah, I don't have mine.
Denise was complaining because she got an auto restart from IT.
Yes, and now I have to call IT because she's not ready yet.
Oh, good.
Do you mind if we wait a few minutes?
No, you're important. I'll let you adjust that.
Yes, I will.
You gotta pay the rent, Denise.
I know.
Yeah.
I thought that was a little too good to be true.
Yeah.
Because we had a client who had the property just to the south of it.
Yeah, all I did was send her the GIS. I'm like, Heidi, I'm like, go to Pasco Mapper. Your agent's all out and know how to do that.
My computer's locked.
Everything's there. I mean, you can get all into anything I can answer. You don't tell them your secrets.
Good lord.
Inside of a garage, mic it, built out the space, and set aside two tennis courts. They kept it out of the plot. So tracing them, they're like, oh, track legs or something in there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, all you gotta do is.
She's right when you're attacking.
Redo construction plans, you gotta redo the plot. I mean, it's like two years ago. I mean, come on.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And let's begin with a moment of silence and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, well, let me just start by welcoming back a very important person. Been on a, what, six-month trip? Was it? Seems like it. Welcome back, Denise.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner members.
So we can have the roll call, please.
Mr. Jamie Girardi.
Here.
Mr. Derek Quamblin.
Here.
Mr. Peter Hansel.
Here.
Mr. John Rudy.
Here.
Mr. Christopher Poole.
Here.
Mr. Chris Williams.
Here.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Here. And the proof of publication, please.
The items were published in the Tampa Bay Times on August 17th, 2022, November 23rd, 2022, and January 4th, 2023.
All right, thank you. I think we have minutes to approve.
We do have minutes to approve, and I guess with the revision, there's a couple places in there. I was not at that meeting, but there's a couple of spots in there that said I made a motion.
Yes.
If I can just get corrected, I'll make a motion to approve with that revision.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion of the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like, sign. Okay, motion carries. Okay. So before we go any further, if anybody intends to give testimony today, come up and speak. If you would stand and raise your right hand and be sworn, please.
Do you swear or not? The testimony you're about to give, if the truth will help you out?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, so I'd like to welcome everybody. If you haven't been to a commission meeting before, let me just tell you how it works. We're the Planning Commission. We're appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. We meet twice monthly. We serve as the local planning agency, and we hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anybody is in opposition to any comprehensive plan amendment or development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it would be important for you to attend the Board of County Commissioners' meeting, and we have those dates available. For those of you who aren't familiar with the, how the meeting flows, we have three sections. We have continuances, and those are items where the staff generally, or the applicant, has requested that the application be continued for any number of reasons. It's been our custom to approve continuance requests unless there are standing waiting circumstances. And we have consent agenda items. We'll go through those one at a time. If you hear anything that's on the consent agenda that you'd like to have discussed today, please raise your hand. We'll be happy to pull it for discussion. And then we have the regular items. Those are items that did not remain on consent, or the regular items that we already have identified today. Those will be all fully vetted, and you can have a chance to speak on those. Applicants will have three minutes to make their presentations, and questioners, people in the audience, will have three minutes to ask their questions and state their concerns, and then the applicant will have an opportunity to come back up and explain or respond to any questions that may have been raised. If anyone has, I don't think anyone has requested extra time. Are you aware of that, Annie?
That's correct. No one has requested extra time.
Okay, so if you have a phone, I think most of you probably do, why don't you just check it, make sure it's on the silent position, so it doesn't interfere with anybody that may be coming up to speak. And before we start the meeting, is there anybody here to speak on something that's not on today's agenda? Anything that's not on today's agenda? I see no one. Okay. I think we're ready.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. We're going to start with item PC2, which is PDD 237678. It's in the name of Margie A. Tingley. It's for change in zoning from C3, commercial light manufacturing district, to a C2, general commercial district. The applicant has requested a continuance to the 2223 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
2223, okay. All right, do I hear a motion? Is the applicant present?
The applicant is virtually present.
Okay. I guess they have no comment? Okay, is there anyone here to object? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to continue.
Second.
A motion and a second. Further discussion on the motion? If not, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like, sign. Okay.
Following item is PC3, PDD 23CU03, in the name of Home Elite LLC and Priya Properties LLC, Urban 54 Estates. Staff is asking for continuance on this item to a date uncertain.
Okay, uncertain. All right. So is the applicant present?
The applicant is not present, nor virtually present, but is aware of the request for continuance.
Okay, anyone here to speak to this one? Okay, no one. All right, do I hear a motion?
Move to continue, PC3, to date uncertain.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, like, sign. Okay, motion carries.
Following item is PC4, PDD 23CU09, in the name of Nikki Clemente and Michael Rutman, for a vacation short-term rental in an R4 high-density residential district. The applicant is requesting that the item be continued to the February 16th, 2023, Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
Okay. Is the applicant present?
The applicant is not present, nor virtually present, but is aware of the continuance.
Okay. Anyone here to object? No one?
I'll move to continue to February 16th.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like, sign.
Following item is PC5, PDD 230148. This is for large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPAL 2201, for the Odessa Town Center PB. Staff is requesting a continuance on this item to the 216, 2023, Local Planning Agency meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
All right, and the applicant present? It's the county?
The applicant is the county. So, yes, we're here.
You're present, okay.
What was the date on that again?
February 16th, 2023, at 1:30, Newport Ritchie.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So, anybody from the audience have a comment? No one? Okay, all in favor? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to continue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? If all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like, sign.
And we're going to move to the addendum, because that's another continuance as well. So your addendum is APC7, PDD 230012. It's for large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPAL 2208, for State Road 52 Groves. And this is a staff request to continue the item to the February 2nd, 2023, Local Planning Agency meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
23?
Yeah, 2223.
All right, in Dade City.
Dade City.
All right. Anybody here to speak to this item? Okay. Not, do I hear a motion?
Denise, is it normal for something at this location to be heard in Dade City versus in Newport Ritchie?
I can ask, it's typically normal when there is no opposition.
Okay.
What seems to be the issue here has to do with some review of the potential for the area. It's not driven by citizen complaint. It's the county asking for the continuance. But the next meeting in Newport Ritchie would be 216. So if you were so inclined to do, to continue it to Newport Ritchie, the applicant is on the line who can talk to that, and if we could please promote Ms. Will Height, the next meeting in Newport Ritchie in February would be 216, 2023. And we also have the project manager here as well.
Go ahead.
So I would agree with what Denise said. We have noticed this, and we haven't received any public interest, so I think it's fine to be in Dade City. We always understand that if we do get public interest, we may have to continue it, if that's an issue. But I think for now, that's a reasonable way to go, is to continue it, because if not, it's, you know, that's, the continuous, the second's not really, my client's not really happy about, but at least it's better than the 16th.
Okay.
So is she agreeable to Dade City?
Yes.
I am.
Okay. Very good. And do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like, sign.
And my colleague, Doreen Roy, will be handling item PC6.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Doreen Roy, Planning and Development. Item PC6, or P6? P6. It's Clinton Townhomes, CPAS 2218, small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, PDD 230089. Site location, property is located in the East Market area. Proposal to amend future land use flu maps 2-15 and sheet 15 from RES6 and RES9 to RES9. Approximately a quarter of a mile west of US Highway 301 on Clinton Avenue. A resolution is to amend future land use flu maps 2-15 and sheet 15 from RES6 residential and RES9 residential to RES9. The following policies are consistent with the proposed comprehensive plan amendment, policy flu 1.4.3 transitional land uses, and policy flu 8.1.4 East Market establishment. Approximately a quarter mile west of US 301 on Clinton. Existing future land use is RES6 and RES9. And you can see it clearly marked there. You might not be able to see it clearly with the coloring and the hash marking, but I specifically put the RES9 and RES6, so you can see the parcels. It consists of two parcels. Let's go back. And the proposed future land use is RES9 for both parcels. Zoning is MF2 on both parcels. Staff's recommendation to the local planning agency to find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners. Are there any questions for staff?
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, Dorian, I have an update on page five of six of the agenda memo. This was originally requested of us, I think it started about a year and a half ago, so it was before we changed some elementary boundaries on that side. So in the agenda memo, it says that Centennial Elementary will serve this location. That is no longer the case. It is now Pasco Elementary. And Pasco Elementary, the middle school and the high school does not change, so it'd be Pasco Elementary. The school capacity there is 715. The 2022-23 current ADM is 537, so it's at 75% of capacity, and so the enrollment with this proposed development would be 550, bringing it to 77%.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Doreen, while you're there, is it still standard, and I notice we keep getting these things, and there keeps being no comment from fire, from emergency, from sheriff, from any of those, are any of those departments reviewing this, these submittals, or these requests?
We are sending them, and I do reach out, so when we do have something like this come forward, we do, it is sent to them to review, and I constantly have to send out an email to make sure that we get in comments, and sometimes they just email back no comments.
Okay, but the sheriff's office did respond back, no comment. It wasn't, you didn't hear from them?
Correct, yes, they do respond.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to springboard from that, what about the fire department?
Fire department, I usually never hear from them.
If I may, I think many months ago, almost 12, the subject came up, and I think it's unfair to the public as a whole that these two departments, which are extremely critical to safety of any county, do not respond, other than in a negative fashion. And the fire department's not even doing that, it sounds like. I think there should be some pressure applied, that they either indicate that, yes, we have reviewed this, and we do not concur, or we concur, or we have comments. I think there needs to be a positive response, other than no response, and that's just a...
And sometimes they do say no comments.
So I'm just going to play devil's advocate with you a little bit. Part of the problem staff was having, and it was more on the MPD side than the comp plan side, is that they were waiting on comments from some of these departments, and it was actually slowing down the entire process, and applicants were put in limbo for months and months, because staff was waiting on comments from affected agencies and not getting any. So the problem with saying that they have to provide comments is it has the potential of slowing down an otherwise meritorious application for months and months, because the department doesn't want to focus on it. So I think Mr. Petos isn't here, but he actually created a new processing, at least for MPDs, I'm not sure if it applies on plan amendments or not, that he designated certain agencies for which we had to have comments, and then other agencies, they were more optional. They still get the applications, and they're free to comment, but their staff is not going to hold up the applications, waiting on their comments. That's the issue.
And that's correct, yeah. We try to keep it flowing, keep it moving, and like I said, I often have to reach out several emails to get a response.
So at some point, it becomes a fairness to the applicant issue.
I understand that.
If you don't move the application forward.
And we do not want to slow that process down, because it's not fair to the applicant, but having come from that field, I still think that, and in some counties that I've lived in in the past, especially in southern counties or southern states, there was that process in place, and there was some, there's always some positive feedback, especially in the sheriff's department or law enforcement, because they have to count or determine how many officers they would need down the road to hire per thousand population, depending on whatever county it is. I don't want to belabor the point, but I just feel like...
No, you are correct, and I agree fully. You know, it's future projections.
So I think part of the issue, in my opinion, is that I'm not sure that those two groups, fire, rescue, and the sheriff's office, and staff can tell me if I'm wrong, have dedicated people to just reviewing applications and plans. For example, transportation, we have a whole team of people that review all the plans. We have, Parks has dedicated staff to reviewing plans. Natural Resources has dedicated staff to reviewing plans. I don't know, Brad, or Denise, you tell me if I'm wrong, I don't know if fire, rescue, and the sheriff's office, well, the school board obviously does, because Chris pays attention to everyone that comes through, so I just don't know if fire, rescue, and sheriff's office have that same level of staff involvement.
So Brad Tippin, Planning and Development, the answer to that is yes and no. For the fire, fire rescue, they have, the fire marshal has people on his team that are dedicated to reviews of both site plans, building permits, and also make comments on these. Just to clarify on this one, in particular in the system, it does show that the fire marshal's office did make a comment specifically of no comments on this particular project, so they did respond on this one. This wasn't one where we cleared it off. The difference with the sheriff's office, that's a little bit of a different thing. We tend to get a, kind of a standard, generic comment back from them about the ranking of Florida, the sheriff, sheriff officers per capita in the county, but there's no real constructive feedback on the sheriff's needs or anything specific to the projects when they do respond so far. So, but to my understanding, I believe they only have one person that's looking at those plans, and they do get, at the board's request, and the sheriff's office requests a while back, they get all of the plans. They are, sent everything that we do, site plans, they're sent MPDs, they're sent comp plan amendments, so they've got one person that's likely overwhelmed with information there.
Brad, what's the timing? So David mentioned that there's a process that Terry's come up with for timing. What's the timing allowed for them to respond? And is that consistent for, you know, if you're looking at equating, or is it just related to MPDs, where they have a time limit to respond?
Yeah, there are different timelines associated with the comp plan amendments, and they function a little bit differently. Some of them are a little bit more of a back-and-forth process. Some of them are a more structured process. When you get down to the site plan review, there's kind of that back-and-forth comment process. So the timelines are a little bit different for each case. But generally, the timeline for an MPD comment coming back from them would roughly be 45 days. For the comp plan, I'm not sure exactly where that would be, as far as what that was designated at. I know that's a different department for me, so Terry was working on that one. I agree that, you know, David was discussing the memo that Terry had put out regarding MPDs, and kind of creating two different categories, kind of like the must-have response from category, and then the respond if you do, but if they don't respond, then we move forward. My understanding is fire is on the respond category, but I don't know that the sheriff's office is.
Thank you.
So since we're speaking hypotheticals, is there anything, and this might be a question for you, David, is there anything that the B OCC can do to compel these, obviously, fire falls under county. Sheriff's is separate constitutional, but is there anything that B OCC can do, or us, that we can do to compel these agencies to respond with some sort of a positive comment, either, you know, we think it will affect us, and we have a plan for that, we think it will affect us, we don't have a plan, or we don't think it'll affect us? So the county administrator, so the fire, rescue hall reports to the county administrator and the assistant county administrator for public safety, they can both compel that department to respond to applications. You are correct, though, that the sheriff is an independent constitutional officer, and generally, the board has no authority to compel the sheriff to respond to applications. Now, we also don't have authority to compel the school board to do it either, but they just do, because they recognize the value of being able to participate in the planning process. At one point, I thought the sheriff recognized the value too, because at one point, he asked for a seat on the planning commission, and I think staff's solution was that they would just involve them more in the pre-app and application process. I can't answer the question about why they're not more actively involved. All I can tell you is we have a good model of, even under the county administrator, the school board actively participates and probably gets certain developer concessions that they otherwise wouldn't have gotten had they not participated in the process. I can't comment as to why the sheriff is not doing that.
I think the comment of no comments is much more helpful than no comments. I think the comment of no comments is much more helpful than no comment, than not commenting. At least then you know that they've seen the application, they know something's coming. But that was, I mean, that's important.
I mean, I can give you probably the most, there are some kind of fairly extreme examples, which is even when we're planning very large scale, like Villages of Pasadena Hills, or Connected City, or Angeline, very large areas of the county that probably are going to have public safety needs, even in those projects, we weren't getting a lot of feedback from public safety. So for example, Villages of Pasadena Hills has sites allocated for parks, sites allocated for schools, roads, utilities. To the best of my knowledge, there's no specific sites allocated for fire stations or sheriff substations. Probably the same thing with La Angeline. I mean, so it is a problem, and I'm, I've raised this concern in the past, but I don't have a solution.
Public safety appears to be a little bit more reactive as opposed to proactive. And we know these projects are coming down the line, and there's no reason, you know, fire stations aren't built in a day, and deputies aren't hired in a day either.
Now, with, with fire, I do occasionally see MPUDs where fire rescue has requested a, a fire station site. So I wouldn't say that they never request one. But I'm not sure that their advanced level of planning is as sophisticated as the school board, or transportation, or parks, to your point.
Well, that'd be my concern too, David, with, with, say, Villages of Pasadena Hills. I mean, some of those MPUDs are coming in now, and they're gonna need, I would think, they would need some fire stations and...
And that needs to be planned.
Yes, it needs to be planned. And, and it's time now for them to be in that process.
At, at the advanced level of development that's going on in this county, it's something that needs to be, you know, we could get away with being more reactive when there wasn't a whole lot of growth going on, but there's a lot of growth going on.
I mean, if it's important enough to the planning commission, we can get staff to request that a representative from the sheriff's office and fire rescue attend a future planning commission meeting and kind of explain their thoughts when applications come forward, and why they either are or are not generating comments. I mean, that's the only thing I could suggest that you do, right?
I'd make that motion.
Yeah, I would, I would concur with that. It, it's just not the planning stages, it's the growth, especially with the apartment complexes that are coming in. You know, some 20-plus years ago, when I moved here, I could drive from Wesley Chapel to Newport Ritchie in a reasonable period of time, and there was a lot of open space. Today, there, there is a tremendous growth, and it's predominantly in population growth with the apartment complexes. And those houses, a number of people that you think would require, and do require, law enforcement, but more important is fire department. And in my area that I've seen, the three or four fire stations have not grown in equipment nor in size, or would indicate manpower shortages too. So, you know, those need to be addressed. They're important.
And if you're gonna have higher multi-story buildings, so they're gonna need additional equipment, I would assume. I assume they're planning for that, but I don't know that.
So this is Brad again. Yeah, they, they have been participating in that manner. They don't necessarily have comments. Like, David did mention that, you know, the MPUDs, where they know there's an area where they're gonna need a station for response time. There's usually a condition of approval that says, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna get one by such and such time within here, and we'll work out exactly where and how big. So there's, there's some of that that happens. And, and we do have participation from the fire marshal's office quite a bit in, in looking at, you know, where some of those are going. But they seem to be reacting somewhat to when things come on the ground, when we have actual site planning that shows that there's going to be this many units in this area, or this much density over here, not so much to the, the future land use or the zoning, because those don't always reflect what happens on the ground in the end. So they, they kind of have a general planning, and they often don't respond until the site plan stages as to whether, you know, what they need to do in certain scenarios. Makes it difficult because we usually, in the MPUD stage, is where you, where you actually get some land to do some things if you need to do them. But they, I think they have more so than, in the last year or so, there's a few that, that they have specifically requested locations in certain areas, and we've made sure that those are a part of the MPUD.
Yeah, I'd say that's the issue, because it takes time to be able to purchase assets and to hire staff and to, you know, in the case of fire rescue, to, to buy new fire trucks and ambulances, and it has, it has to be budgeted well in advance. So, you know, that's, that could be a couple-year process right there. So that the earlier in the planning process that this gets addressed with some, I guess with some substance, the better.
The other potential issue is that we do have concurrency, which, so for things like parks, water, sewer, those types of facilities, schools, there's a, there's actually somebody that has to sign off and say, well, yes, we have capacity, yes, they've passed concurrency. We don't have that for fire rescue and sheriff. It is an option. I mean, you, local governments can have concurrency for other public facilities like fire rescue and the sheriff. We just don't have that in our comp plan or land development code. So if that's something that you wanted staff to pursue, that's something that the planning commission or the board would have to direct staff to start implementing some concurrency type review for fire rescue and/or the sheriff's office. But it doesn't currently exist. And the advantage of that system is that there's actually somebody that has to sign off and say, yes, we have capacity to serve this new development. That's, right now, fire rescue and sheriff's office don't have to do that. They can just say no comment. So they don't have to make the affirmative step of saying, I have capacity to serve the sheriff.
That's, that's not a bad idea in some ways, because that's, at least you're getting either an affirmative answer to something. Yeah, we concur that we do have sufficient staff and support service to provide this community. And, you know, we find out eventually that, in fact, they don't, you know.
Well, to Dorian's comment, I know that the sheriff's office typically has their typical comment that comes back on their, their reviews. So, to their point, having that sort of teeth in the process, and then to actually have to progressively plan and, and, you know, advance that discussion, you know, if they have actual concurrency and they have to review these plans, and they have to give their, their concurrency to the developments, that gives teeth to what they're asking for as far as hiring additional officers and putting in additional substations and the like, so.
And just to clarify, I did just also confirm that the sheriff's office also replied with a specific comment that they had no comments. So both fire and the sheriff's office on this one said they had no comments.
That's the problem, is the no comment is a neutral response. It's not a, yes, we do, no, we don't. We have a plan if we don't, or we don't have a plan if we don't.
Well, I'll play devil's advocate. I mean, I, I look at that comment as, as they don't see any issues out there. So I mean, at least then they're giving you some kind of concurrence that they've looked at it. But I understand your point.
Yeah, they have a chance to say that there is an issue, or there's no comment. And that's, that's sort of the way I would look at it. But, you know, I think sometimes, in my experience, the most difficult thing is just to get a comment. Because I know there's some pretty simple applications that, you know, have sat on the shelf for weeks and weeks, just on simple remodeling jobs and things like that, waiting for the fire marshal to respond, and nothing, you know. So what do you do? You have to find somebody to try to intervene. That, that shouldn't happen. There should be some kind of time limit, you know, they have to respond in. Because I even know a guy that was trying to open a small takeout pizza place, it took him over a year and a half to get his permits. I mean, that's, that's ridiculous.
That's true.
For the fire marshal. That's, that's crazy. So if we don't, we, they need to have some kind of, you know, something to motivate them to respond within a certain period of time. And they can't keep changing it every time you turn around, you know. It's just that, that gets old after a while. And it's not fair to these people that are trying to do business.
Well, there's, there's deadlines on the rest of the process. If we require concurrency, why couldn't we require a deadline on that as well? I mean, I guess it's up to them to respond within that deadline, but...
If they don't respond, then it's...
It's a no response.
It's a no response. It hurts.
Well, concurrency's a little different, because concurrency, the application really can't move forward until there's been some affirmative sign-off by the affected agency. So...
I guess I'm not talking about concurrency as much as I am just a simple building permit, you know.
I mean, it sounds like it's an important enough discussion to kind of have those, you know, have fire come here for a meeting and kind of discuss their process or the like. Brad, did you say that sheriff has somebody that's dedicated, or I thought they did have somebody?
Sheriff, sheriff's office does have an individual that's dedicated. I think there's that individual in the backup, or someone that, that assists. I'm not sure exactly how the structure is over there, but there is somebody that, that does that there. Fire marshal has several people on the team that, that helps do that review. Just also confirmed that they are both on the MPUDs. They're both optional reviewers. So if they don't give us feedback within the time limit, we move on. That's based on the MPUD. And it looks like that's gonna be... Okay. It seems like that's, that's kind of gonna be what it's gonna be for the, the comp plan amendments as well. And I see that there is a, there's a meeting that is in the process of being scheduled to discuss all of that with them, in, in terms at least of the comprehensive plan amendments.
Perfect.
I know the feedback we're hearing from the citizens are, you know, the increased lengths of time for time of responses to calls for service. And that may or may not be related to planning, but it would be nice to at least, you know, know that that's not related to planning. So it's something that we should at least speak to them more about.
Okay.
I don't know if you would need a, a motion that we propose a meeting with a rep from the fire marshal and from the sheriff's office.
Well, I don't, personally, I don't think it'd be a bad idea to have a representative from each attend, and at least get, you know, some feeling of the importance of the issue, and the importance of responding in a timely manner.
Yeah, I concur with that. I think the 10 minutes that we have spent on this subject matter, I think there are some ears out that are listening, and that it will get to the correct source. I, I think Chris Narkle does a good job with his agency, and I think the fire department does a good job too. I'm just concerned about, as growth, growth goes two ways. It goes both for those two agencies and the building within the community. And I certainly do not want to slow anything down. That's my personal feeling, and I hope it's our feeling as a, as a board here, that progress needs to move forward as quickly as possible, all these subjects that come before us. So, but I think fire, safety, and police, sheriff are very important. And that's the end of my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Well, did you, did you have a motion, was, was your motion to have a workshop on this, or no? I don't know if you got a second to your motion or not, but...
Yeah, I'd, I'd make that motion to have a workshop on it.
So we have a motion on the floor, or we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
Can I ask what exactly the workshop would be? Normally, a workshop is us presenting information. Do you want them to simply appear to have a discussion, or do you want some, them to prepare some sort of a presentation as to what they do and how they do it when they review this?
Maybe discussion might be better. So I can amend my motion if that's...
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion?
Yeah, I only called it a workshop because it's not an action item. It's a, or a public hearing item. It's, it's, workshops are discussions, basically. It's the same thing. He was just asking for expectations, was staff expected to do a presentation for the workshop? And it sounds like the answer is no.
Yes, that is right. That's correct. Okay. So all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Oh.
Okay. Record one, no. All right. I think we're still in the middle of the case.
Yeah, sorry for the detour, Dorian. And I didn't mean to bog down.
I'm waiting for an answer.
All right.
Shelley's turn. Yeah, you started all this.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Sorry.
Shelley, are you coming up?
Thank you, Shelley Johnson, 6400 Madison Street. I have been sworn. I'm here to answer any questions, but we're obviously in agreement with staff's recommendation on this one, so...
I guess, Shelley, while you're up there, can, can you kind of walk me through how we got where we are? I mean, how did a plan come in for more units, and then all of a sudden, a big hole get left in the front of the development to where we're almost back in the same case of, here, we built the house, we didn't meet the setbacks, what are you gonna do, make us tear it down, kind of situation?
No, I don't, to be honest with you, I wasn't involved when the construction plans were approved. I know Patrick has a lot more detail. He's here today too, if you want to answer any question, if he, he can answer some more questions. But my understanding is the construction plan approval for 125 units was within the existing land use and zoning, but it could not be blended across the site. So they had, because it's a Euclidean, so they had to do the comp plan amendment. So they got to actually construction plan approval, and long-range planning told them, go back and do a comp plan amendment. So that's what they had to do in order to do the res six to the res nine, so they can blend those densities, but...
Is the project under construction?
The project is not under construction. They got, they, they were stopped until they came through the process with this comp plan amendment.
How were they stopped? They haven't approval?
They were stopped. So they have not done anything. So I know he has a little bit more information about it, Patrick, but, yeah, they were told that they cannot move forward even with that approval unless they did this comp plan amendment. So then they went back and started that process, I believe, last April.
Okay. And then my, my next question is not something I normally see when I look at a developer's plan, because there's a big parcel that's included in this land use amendment that they're not touching. Is there some reason they're not doing anything with that, six acres on the north, northeast corner of their development? Lumping it in to gain the entitlements?
To be honest with you, I don't, I don't know. I mean, if they, whatever they're including for the res six and res nine is what...
Plan said it was a perpetual drainage easement.
Oh, okay, yeah. He's probably...
For that north parcel.
Sorry, I don't know.
So if I may just give you a little bit on the timeline. So, yeah, so they submitted their residential subdivision. Actually, it was a resubmital back in April of 2022. And in May, long-range planning told them about the, the amendment, because according to section flu, A dash 3.2, it interprets the flu boundary as a fixed boundary. So therefore, they could not mix or blend the two res six and res nine together. They needed to do an amendment to make, make it all unified for the density.
The question is, how did the site plan get approved, and then after the fact, they're told to stop?
Right. And they got an approval for 125 units, and Mr. Dutter for current planning can explain that. He's privy to the details.
Some of the details. Patrick Dutter, planning and development. Yeah, that answer is, is basically correct.
I think, Dorian, you're sworn? I didn't think you stood up.
Staff usually doesn't swear.
Yeah. I, I can do it if you want, but...
Staff swears all the time.
Yes, we do.
After they hang up.
If they're not telling the truth, they're gonna get fired. That's why.
Okay, that's good enough.
Yeah, so we had a pre-application meeting. Application came in. It was noticed when the application came in for the entirety of it, that they were essentially trying to blend densities, which you can't do if it's not an MPUD, because it's Euclidean. So we said, we can't approve it like this. They said they want to essentially continue to move forward, but take off a portion of their development. So they still meet the density restrictions on either side. And so, so they have an approval. They could theoretically start construction, because they are underneath the density caps for either side. Now they're trying to come in to essentially make the entire project res nine. So the res nine will then encompass the entire project. Therefore, there is no more blending of any densities. It's all res nine.
Was there a site plan that was approved which blended the densities?
No.
No.
There was a, there was a site plan that was approved that had a res nine section on it and a res six portion on it.
So it wasn't a mistake in site plan approval?
No, we were aware during the review, and we would not have approved, during the review, we caught it, and we, we recognized it. And this is kind of how we were essentially gonna move forward, is, okay, we can approve it because they are separate densities. But for them, again, to get the number of units that they want, they have to now come in to do a...
I understand, I think it was just confusing, and I think Jamie and I both confused the same thing. When I read the staff report initially, my initial thought was, oh, they issued a site plan by mistake, but now you're telling me that's not the case.
That is correct, that is not the case.
Well, that's pretty good, when they confuse both of you guys.
And just to clarify, and I do see the reference, and I missed it before, there is a perpetual drainage easement, so there is not a chance that the remaining entitlements, once this whole thing's rez nine, will be sold off to somebody else? Because I saw, the reason I'm asking that question is there is a limitation in the agenda memo that limits to 158 units, which if they're rez nine, they technically, I think, by the comp plan, they'd be entitled to 195 or 196, so I just, but if there's a perpetual drainage easement on the northern piece, there's, the chances of somebody coming in to develop that in the future don't exist, so I just wanted to confirm that that's the case.
Confirmed, yes.
All right, Patrick, thank you.
Is that still two legal, separate parcels?
Currently, so they'll need to do a title to essentially use that density.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Mr. Denise, what's next?
I think you...
Is there any other question?
Don't you need a motion for this one?
Yeah, we do, but I'm just asking if you have anything else.
Nope, that's it, this is your last item.
Nobody on WebEx or anything like that?
We have no one that signed up for this item on WebEx.
Okay, good. So any further discussion, questions?
Did you ask?
If not...
I'm sorry, did you ask for public comment?
I think I did, did I not?
No.
Is there a public comment? I guess there's not.
Just want to make sure.
There are a lot of people in the audience.
Yeah.
Yeah, mostly it's staff people. There's a couple of people who just like to watch our proceedings.
Last meeting we...
Give this man some satisfaction.
In our last meeting, we didn't have to beg for comments.
Yeah. That is for so true. Okay, so if there's no further comments, then I'll be open for a motion? Second, because I've denied both of Shelley's last two projects, so I want to make sure she gets this one. I know, yeah, she wrote that down, too. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign? Motion carries. Hey, Shelley, all right.
It's a win.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, wait, Denise is getting up, so we can't get out of here fast.
Sorry about that. I just want to poll the planning commission, because we may have some budget to, instead of you having iPads, to have like those, like Surface, or like, I don't know what they're called, they're called...
Convertible PCs, right?
Right, yeah. Yeah, that type of thing, instead of an iPad. So just wanted to see if the planning commission had any interest in having that instead of an iPad, which kind of like puts you, you know, you're either an Apple person, or you're like, more like a Windows Office and, you know, Microsoft-type person, so if you're more comfortable with Microsoft stuff, perhaps that would be something you would like better or prefer?
I'm not an Apple person, so, yeah.
Okay, so just wanted to see if...
I was actually going to ask if I could give the iPad back.
Okay, all right, so it sounds like we kind of have three so far, so, all right, so there's interest, okay, four, okay, got it, all right. Okay, so I'm going to take that as yes as an answer, so that's all I had, thank you so much.
And Denise, I use mine from the school system.
From the school system, so, okay.
What I would ask is, can we get the Pasco County email address forwarded to the one that we use? I've seen that citizens have tried to reach out to me, and they email me at the Pasco County box, which I don't access, so if they could put a forward to, that would be great.
Let me see if that's a possibility, okay.
Yeah, I sort of had the same problem, because they told me that, because I use Outlook for my business, they said they can't give me a Pasco County email address, because they use Outlook. Well, we all have one, but you've got to use that.
You have one, but you can't add it to your app, because you have to live outside of that, yeah.
That's what I'm asking, they just forward it to the one...
Also, you can't add that email address to your Outlook?
I've got it on mine.
Like a pop?
I've been able to, because I have that, but I, you know...
I don't know how about it to tell the question, I just said, okay.
Now, you can't do that on your phone, I do know that, it's got to be separate, but I have my Pasco, it comes with my Outlook on my, with my other emails.
Yeah, they give you the settings to look into it.
So we should run that by the IT folks, because there are some controlling software that our IT department uses that may apply there that would make that difficult forwarding, or you may be limited in what you can do, or there may be some things that we, so we should probably look into that and then get back to you.
I guess it's an exchange server, so you should be able to just add it to Outlook, you know, and your Outlook app on the phone too, if you have it.
Well, again, I'm not a technical person, so I'm going to ask the folks in IT, but I will say that when the county transitioned, and perhaps Mr. Eric Peppers, who works for IT, might be able to say something, but when the county transitioned to Pasco 365, I couldn't do it as an exchange server. I had to, I used to have my Outlook as an exchange server on my phone, I had to specifically get the Outlook app separately, they couldn't be on my exchange server anymore, so...
And I did have the situation...
And that happened when they transitioned last year in like October-ish to Pasco 365.
Yeah, and I had a situation where the, if I had a personal copy of the same software that the county was using for something, there were some conflicts, and there were some problems, so we should probably get IT to...
But certainly, going to ask the question, and I'll hopefully have an answer by the next planning commission meeting.
Thanks for checking into it.
Absolutely. That's all I had, thank you.
All right, thanks for coming over.
We're all done.
All right, now motion to adjourn.
We already had that.
Okay.
Just need a second. You can take it.
Chris seconded.
I think we're staying to vote.
Yeah.
We voted.
Oh, did we? Okay, good, all right. Perfect.